He said that they were.
How they were matched, they were the same.
Yeah, but what happens is when you, when you get, if you get ten bids, right, they'll all be around a certain range, or maybe not, but it's not, it's not necessarily, yeah, but, but then they choose one. Right? They choose one, they don't send them both letters saying, so they both don't show up with the money. You pick, you pick one, and a lot of times you pick it based on relationships and their building.
Relationship and we sent the bid out in the newspaper, right?
You may have a relationship with the company, like, like for example, the, the.
So have we dealt with these two companies before?
I don't know.
Who bought Eddie Road? Who's taking over the thing Eddie Road?
Uh, Dan Ray.
What's, what's the name of that place?
Dan Ray Construction, you talking about that transfer station?
Yeah, so they would, if, if they bid on it, just, just for example, if they bid on it, we have a relationship with them, so we would be more. That is, that is how bids go. So anyway, uh, Mr. Marshall, just for, just for the sake of, if anyone ag- ever asks this question, you're in the service department, you've seen these vehicles, you've experienced, kicked tires, went under the hood, are any of these things salvage? Any of these things can be saved?
No.
They're all junk.
Yes.
Just in the way at this point.
So we, we didn't ask for it to be passed as an emergency, you more than welcome to come down, kick the tires, jump inside, bring your mechanic.
Your mechanic, Mr. Marshall?
We have a guy down there that works on, he do partial work on vehicles.
Okay, 'cause I was looking at some of it, like the F two fifty four, those are very popular vehicles. Some of, like, one of the issues we've had was snow trucks, which we have two new ones now, right? And they're operating, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I, you know, I just, I'm not gonna hold this up, it just seemed to me, some of it, uh, it's a lot of stuff here we looked at, thank you for providing that, I just thought that some of it might be, like, to fix the old leak or something like that, is it cheaper to fix that than to, uh, you know, get, if you get a brand new thing, you'll spend so much more, uh, and now some of it is junk, but, you know, just from a common sense standpoint, I'm not a mechanic, I just think some of it can be repaired and, and you'll save money.
But I, I've been here.
What's your take on that?
I've been here since, uh, I've been for like four years.
Okay.
And a lot of these vehicles, I worked here in oh eight also, and came, and came back in two thousand thirteen. Um, and a lot of these vehicles been broke down since I was here in oh eight, and with the money, and I hear a lot about the money issues, and, and it's like oil leaks and transmission leaks plus electrical problems, I just feel like we not, if it been sitting that long, no telling what else wrong with it, and they been in the same spot since oh eight. You know, and, uh, some of them salt trucks been here, man, since nine, since two thousand, broke down since like two thousand, two thousand one. I just felt like the best thing is just to clear the lot, you know, bring some little revenue in and try to see what we can, can do for the future because, you know.
We don't, we don't, I know we have a mechanic that's over here.
He's overwhelmed.
He's over, we don't, we have a mechanic down there?
We have a mechanic, um, that works on the vehicles when they get, you know, he works on the vehicle, what he can do.
All right, just going.
If you like, you can come down and see him, it's not a problem.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it.
For one, I'm not gonna be walking down in no place looking to see something I don't know nothing about. The, my, my, my concern is, you got two bidders, and I'm not talking about the relationship, I'm talking about fair business practice, that's what I'm talking about. If you got two bidders and they got the, the same, uh, amount of money there, first one come with their money upfront to give me that, and I take all of them, and you pull us off, I don't mean take half of it. When you bring that money, you better bring me a, um, a, um, a, uh, letter that says, when we come, we going to take it all, we're not going to do any. So I think that's a fair business practice, and we don't want nobody coming back on, I don't care.
That's not how bids work.
So, um, Council President, thank you.
Mr. Smith, which rejected amount of money, just, I know you can't give us a, how much money we?
In total, for both pieces?
Yeah.
It'll probably end up about twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars. Which allows us to buy more cold patch, prepare and repair the, and service the, the mowing equipment so that soon as, is we gonna have another cold snap probably next week, or we got, but we got to ensure that we have enough cold patch, and that when the grass start growing, that we can start cutting, so we have to service the equipment, and this will allow us to do so. And get, uh, and get the, the council clerk some, uh, some ink and some paper.
Take your bet shot and sell it, first one come with the check and the memo saying that, uh, they gonna take it all.
Why you, why you here? Why you gotta here? We do have salt now.
Yes.
We have some salt, right?
Right.
We got cold patch.
We did.
And we got two new truck.
Yes.
Everything, everything is working, everything.
We actually have three, we have three new trucks and, uh, um, the truck we was using, the green, the, the, the green truck that we was planning with, that's usable also.
Okay, so.
Everything is working.
Yes.
And I wanna make it plain that, um, we didn't get this stuff by somebody giving it to us, we paid for it.
Absolutely.
So.
No, I'm just making that up.
Oh, okay.
For that, we, we got it, and I understand through, uh, our finances, that we paid for our stuff this time. We didn't big borrow still, we, we got it.
I don't know how long Mr. Marshall's been running the service department, but under the condition, the politics is playing, I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
And the potholes that they started on, they look good, they were in their field.
I've seen some today on UCL where it's, uh, there was some cold patch put in, which, which is a good thing.
Superior really looks good.
Yeah, you can actually pass through Superior U.
Yeah. Okay, so does that cover both of these?
Yes.
Yeah.
That covers the police too, or you guys got some questions about the police?
We'll do that next.
No.
They gonna give us, he's gonna give us all the information, and we're gonna put it with the legislation, and when it be passed, um, on the second reading, we will be able to, uh, deal with all of this.
You'll have the quotes tomorrow, actually, if they lift it. Definitely for the service equipment, but if the police equipment and old vehicles, if those quotes come in tomorrow, you'll have them tomorrow as well. So before the council meeting.
I got another, uh, question to ask, and, and it's, uh, my, uh, Council Vice President mentioned it to me, uh, not too long ago, and since you brought up the, uh, transfer station, uh, the gentleman said he wanted some more space, has he asked you all about more space?
Yes, he has.
Okay, well, we cannot, uh, deal with more space, um, that has not been included in his area.
Originally.
Yes, uh, that has to be, let him know he has to.
So this, we met, we, we talked about it, I said in order to amend your lease, you have to go through city council. Which piece of, what, what footprint, what are you trying to include in your footprint? Uh, it is two very dilapidated buildings, one you can see right off of, uh, Eddie Road, right before the bridge, and the other is a building that we store broken down equipment into, and, and sometimes the service supervisor parks city vehicle there. And he is willing to demolish those buildings on his own dime. Uh, one has a caved in roof, and it's the old gun range.
Yeah.
It, this, as, as a matter of fact, former, former, uh, s- uh, service director, Mr. Bragatelli has condemned them on several qu- occasions, and asked for them to be du- demolished on several occasions. Um, he's willing to demolish them, include them in his footprint, which then expands his operations so that he can generate more revenue, and generate more revenue, maybe he can hire more people, and the city gets more tax revenue from the, from the place. So, but he, we will be, we will be working with them to include this discussion as it relates to, uh, uh, being reduced to a piece of legislation to be presented to the council clerk, and I'm sure to go on to whoever's comedian's in.
This, this is, this is part of his lease?
No.
Uh, he's gonna buy this?
Well, he would love to buy it, but we're not selling it.
That's what, that's the question I'm asking, but he wants to lease this.
This space after he knocked it down. He wants it included, he would like to include it in his lease, obviously that means we charge him more money, we get free demolition, especially that building that's on Eddie Road right before the bridge, that building should have been gone probably in, in the late nineties. Um, we get it demolished, and we get a tenant on it. He'll do decorative fencing, put up shrubbery, make it look all nice and good, better than looking like a vacant abandoned building sitting next to our service department.
Mr. Smithly?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not deluding the fact of what it would cause, or how it would look. I'm just trying to find the particulars in here that I can deal with, and that is what I'm looking at. I'm saying he wants to, he's going to try to expand his leasing area, that's all I wanna know. So when it comes up here, we will be, uh, waiting to see how he.
The legislation would, will say, the expansion of his lease, to include this parcel and that parcel post demolition.
That's all I want.
Demolition that he will do on his own.
And we will have the particulars, so I'm not worried about that, I just wanna know how it's gonna be done.
Okay.
Mr. Ma- uh, Councilman South.
I'm a personal privileged man, you know, outside of the agenda, but so that we were on topic of, uh, properties. Uh, I had a question about the Noble property, I was not aware that that full structure was gonna be demolished.
I'm not quite sure which property you're talking about.
The one at Noble, the O G, behind the E.
That's what it said inside of its, uh, inside of the, uh, legislation.
That's not what it said upstairs, so.
Who didn't say it's there?
The guy presenting did not say that he was demolishing that property.
That was the purpose of it, the purpose of the legislation with the.
All right, when is he gonna get the rest of that rumble up?
I'm sure, once the weather breaks, he, he has half of his piece of equipment that's up. If you go on his property, and I'm sure you're more than welcome to go, you'll see this construction going on of a sorter. It's half done, the weather has prevented him from getting the rest of it done, and once he gets the rest of it done, he'll run everything through the sorter, and it'll sort the, the recyclable, uh, recyclable materials, and they'll be shipping them out.
Okay, and I think, I think that you, you need to expand on a little later with Mr., uh, the Chief of Staff, and then y'all can do what you gotta do. Is there any more questions on Mr., uh, the Chief of Staff?
No.
Okay, see, I gave you your title and everything else. Okay, is there, uh, any other discussion on this?
Yeah, on this?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna, uh, I wanna say something about eighteen fifteen, Mr. Hay. Yeah, I, Mr. Hay, I just wanna thank you for doing what you do in the park, our park is unique. Uh, we have the, the natural habitat and, 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 and it's special, okay, and, uh, Robert mentioned Dutch Harley was an old friend of mine, and so thank you for picking that up, and, and definitely, we, we're gonna help you, okay? Anything you wanna say?
But before you start, we have to amend, and you'll get an amendment on this legislation because it's not go, eighteen fifteen.
Okay.
We're not donating it to Gordon Hay, we do it, we donate it to the Parks Association. It says in that, in that draft to Gordon Hay, but it's not being given to Gordon.
That's why, that's why.
So it's gonna be amended.
Well, that's why, uh, too, so, but go ahead, Mr. Hay.
Eighteen fifteen?
Just to give you a little background, I'm a resident of East Cleveland since nineteen seventy.
Okay.
Okay, um, you're also looking at the guy that started the East Cleveland Senior Citizen Program.
Okay.
So let's hope for our back, I go. And so, uh, it was a fun project, they get going, and it's, it obviously lasted for quite a while, and it's still kicking, I guess, so that's good. I'm here as the president of the East Cleveland Parks Association, uh, to speak to this mower, the mower that we're, it's in discussion is a mower that, uh, someone rode for a week with no oil in the engine, and blew it out. The cost to repair it, um, the engine itself is about twenty-two hundred dollars, the labor to put that in there is another eight hundred dollars, um, and then the mower probably needs new belts, new battery, what have you. So we're probably looking to spend, uh, thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars on this mower. Why do we do that rather than buy the new mower, you know, 'cause it is a couple thousand dollars cheaper? But you have to remember one thing, this mower is only gonna be used in the park, that's what it's for. Uh, over the past fourteen years, we've put a couple hundred thousand dollars into the park, and you may not have to know that, but we have. This year, we may be spending one hundred thousand dollars in the park. Part of it's going to be for, uh, finish the playground that we started up there, there's a climber, uh, on his way from Europe that costs twenty-five thousand dollars, going to go in the playground that's up near the boathouse. We have another grant that we've just applied for, for fifty-something thousand dollars, uh, that we hope will come through, we have good feeling that may, which will allow us to put a couple new signs about the park, and, uh, picks, uh, put some lights in the parking lot on Lee Road, uh, put a new basketball court up, uh, as well for, for the young people, and perhaps even a volleyball court, and, and stuff. Um, it'll allow us to refurbish and bring up to date the bathrooms of the boathouse, it will be restored and repainted, so. The bridge going over the thing, so these are all things that have been on our plate for some time. Uh, we've been busy writing a couple of grants, uh, so.
Excellent.
Uh, you know, hopefully all this will come, and, and you need to know that no matter what happens to East Cleveland, that park's going nowhere.
That's true.
And it is a park that, you know, we've, uh, been trying to help the city because we know the situation, to, uh, take care of that park, and just because other things fall apart, doesn't mean that people can't have a park that's in good shape, where they can go and, uh, walk, commune with nature, not have somebody looking over their shoulder, or someone in their face, and that they can have a good time, have a picnic, enjoy their family, or whatever.
And I wanna also, not to, uh, cut you off, I wanna also let you know that I've been working and pushing that, um, people do not walk their dogs and let their dogs poop in our park. There is a, um, law against that.
And I'm a dog lover.
And I am too, but they don't carry poop scoopers, they don't carry anything, and it's against the law.
We got bags, we got bags and a little, a container.
But it's against the law.
They have the bags?
It's against the law, no, it's against the law for the dogs to be in there, period. If you go, if, 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 if they go in there, uh, it's against the law, and they can be fined.
The point is, they've never, you know, I would love to have someone up there and say, hey, no dog lovers.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm pushing for.
That has never happened.
Oh, it's gonna happen.
Okay, so I'm, you know, that's, uh, not a problem.
Okay.
So I guess all I'm saying is, and, and I.
I appreciate that.
Is that we're going to be spending some money on the park this year.
All right.
The mower will help us, uh, because there's probably ten to twelve acres of land that we mow. I personally mow, okay, you look at somebody that sits behind the mower, uh, I mow all four baseball fields in cooperation with a high school for all of the softball and hardball games that they play in the park.
All right, and I thank you, and I appreciate it.
We thank you for, for your support, and if you have any questions about that particular mower, I mean, it's been sitting there for two years. Two years.
Just, just wanna thank you, Mr. Hay, I'm looking forward to the basketball court, as, Mr. Smith, you know I used to coach basketball, and I'm.
Okay, just coach me?
Right, coach him, one-on-one, I'm gonna take him out.
He got coached by Martin.
Thank you, and if any help to, uh, the discussions you have here remind me, not that much different from discussions that occurred here in the nineteen seventies, so.
Good to hear that.
Nineteen seventy.
Thank you very much, and one last word, uh, I have to say that this guy right here has, uh, you know, since he's taken on it, he's done a great job. We've worked with the service department over the years, and they have been supportive of what we're doing up there, and they have tried to help whenever they're able, you need to know that.
He is, yeah.
So, okay, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, where are we at? That's the remarks of, have we finished? Are we?
Seventeen and eighteen are going to appear.
Uh, here on the agenda, okay? And, uh, yes. Are we done there?
No, we don't, we don't.
Consensus.
Well, she needs consensus.
Consensus.
I just wanna make sure we're consensus to go on.
Yeah, okay.
I just saw head shaking, I need to hear voices for that.
Don't take it to heart, it was just, uh. All right, it will appear on the agenda for Tuesday. Um, where are we now?
Remarks on the quest of.
Remarks on the quest of the public.
Nobody are agreeing with it.
Okay.
You can't play two roles.
Huh? What do you mean, I can't, I'm not a citizen?
We can't play, what are you, what are you?
Yes, you can.
Uh, first of all, I'm the chair of this.
I'm saying, can I, can I not speak as a citizen?
How are you going, how are you, what are you gonna, you gonna speak as a citizen?
Absolutely.
And you are coming up here to speak.
That's the value of living and working in the same community.
Not here, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Wow.
You're not gonna play the game.
Wow. He can speak as a counselor and a resident, he's a lawyer.
Uh, moving right along, Mr. Smithly, if you're going to be intrusive, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave.
Oh.
Mr. Omay.
I know my cue, thank you, I apologize for interrupting.
All right, have a good day.
You too.
I, I wish you the favor, hear what I have to say. Uh, you have the legal authority to pass any legislation that you want. And it's incumbent, long as it's legal, it's incumbent upon the mayor to carry it out, that's his responsibility. And you keep sitting up here, passing legislation, he just sent it down to you, just like some people are saying now, you're not a department, I relegated you to the department, they say you're employees. 'Cause you do everything, he shows you, he has no respect for you, he has no respect for the citizens of this community. He's trying to tear this city down, whereas it will.
Merge.
Merge. Then selling, if I'm correct, please cor- uh, if I'm, if I'm incorrect, please correct me. I looked at those pictures, some of those vehicles we bought, and some of those are fairly new vehicles, and some of them just are all leaked, and some other things, and then you gonna sell them for seventeen thousand dollars? You, do you have the bids? Have you seen the bids? The bids should have came into you before you go saying, I'm gonna pass this, and I'm gonna do this, and that, or the other. You don't have no bids, you got it on the agenda to pass, if there has been bids, you should have them. Then go from there, so you, you're doing everything that he sends down here to you, and you're saying that he totally disrespect you, and I can see why he disrespect you. If you put this stuff aside, so you come in here, and you bring me the bids, bring me what I need to, for I, uh, uh, put this on the agenda, uh, to pass it, or whatever, you send your leg- legislation down there, you put it to the side, so you can't come in here and discuss this with me, or have the people in here to discuss this with me, it's not going nowhere. Your job, that's derelict a responsibility, and you can get him on that, he derelict, he's not doing his job. And we saying he not doing his job, he's not here, he's not here to answer the question of the council. That is his responsibility, he must be at every meeting, and he can participate in the discussion, let me just finish this.
One extra minute, man.
He must be at every meeting and discuss everything, but he does not have a vote, that's what the charter says. And then you sit up here and you pass it, everything he send down to you, you send, send it back to him. When you come and to discuss this, and show us some respect, we not passing anything. And that you will get his attention, because he is doing what you're saying you wanna keep the city. He's tearing down the city, put a moratorium on tearing down, and that comes before you and say, see what it need to be, then you, uh, give him authorization to do something.
Time is up now, we gave you extra minute, thanks to Mr., uh, Council Baker. Yes, ma'am, Mr. Parker?
I've been coming up here for eighteen, uh, for eight years, I have listened to you guys. The one thing I would like to say, if they bring you a check, let it be a certified check, from low on the rubber, bouncing all over, let them give you a certified check, because people have done all kinds of crazy things. And I hope y'all go home and get the calling post, the mayor is running us under the bridge, so it's gonna be ran off, 'cause he does wanna be, he does wanna merge, so we gotta be very careful, because you know what? I'm not up here to preach, but I'm up here to say, you, if you're gonna work together, work together. But if you're gonna be divided, then you might as well forget it, 'cause it, it's not gonna work, it just not gonna work. Because I, I, I come up here, I'm arguing and arguing, screaming and going, I'm not you, council, not you, Mr. Weal, I mean, you cool, you know what I'm saying, I thought he is too cool for me, I love all you guys. But you gotta be careful, because we is already, I mean, we in the paper practically every other day. So something need to be did, you know, but, so, so like I said, I have, this is the first time I have been up here to say anything, but I'm not trying to throw stones at nobody, but I think you should work together and get something did, and after mayor's gonna do his job, then you get his behind out, give a recall and get him out of here.
You have to recall, he has authority to say, you might.
Uh, Mr. Omay, now you can't talk, I become a newspaper. Uh, is it anybody else that is speaking?
Yeah. What, what, uh, two newspapers were this, uh, this thing, this, I heard the bit, the bit.
You gotta come up here, Mr. Strummer. Danny, hey, Ms., Ms. Stanby.
Well, y'all know me. I'm tired, like I keep saying, I'm tired. Now, I know you all up there is intelligent, and you got common sense, I don't care if you got all the degrees in the world. If you ain't got common knowledge, my mother always would say, you gonna have all the degrees, but if you ain't got common sense, you still a fool. I'm not calling, I'm, that's her, that was her saying, I'm not calling you all no fool now.
That's her favorite.
But listen, now, we know, the citizen knows, most of them know. The mayor, he disrespect the ci- the citizen? He disrespect you all, and you all mean to tell me, you all just like, I'm, I'm not gonna go over and over it. Let him disrespect you all, and he gonna send his, uh, helper, or whatever you call him.
Employee, that's no cheap.
Up here, for you, for, they talking for him, he don't have respect for you all to come up here and, 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 and do his job. He don't care for us, he ain't studying us, so why don't you all get on one accord? Do what you need to do, and forget about it, 'cause the mayor, he, we can't get no lord than we done got. We done, he just done put us in the ground and just keep stomping on us, and we still sitting up here, y'all still passing legislature, doing, to me, how I feel about it, whatever he say do, y'all doing it, you know, my granddaughter asked me before I left out the door. She said, grandmama, you, I said, I'm going to the meeting at, to the hall, she said, grandmama, she said, they ain't, they don't put the, uh, y'all on the TV no more. I said, uh-uh, baby, I said, you know who got that channel now? The mayor, I said, every day, every night I turn it, he sitting up there with that green shirt on, talking. Every time I flip it, he talking, and then next time I turn it, he talking to this white lady, you know, I'm just saying, he did, the channel is his.
Yes.
He, he, you all on, he don't, he don't, uh, uh, video you all, nothing going on at the Shaw High School, what's going on in. His, his, and you all sit up here and let him do that? I don't understand it, I don't understand, please, please say to council, please, I'm praying, do something and don't let him do, continue to do what he been doing for the last six or seven years, please do that.
Thank you, Ms. Stanby.
Please, please, please.
Mr. Strummer?
Okay, I'm just, uh, I heard about the bid, I just wanna know what newspaper was just put in, because it seems kinda weird, there's only three bids with all this junk, you, signs up and down, saying we buy junk, we buy junk, we only got three bids? Something's wrong here, so I just need to know, because you guys weren't voting, what, what newspaper? This is a question you should be asking, 'cause we're gonna have.
That's the question I did ask, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I did ask.
Yeah, we wanna know, we wanna know what newspapers this was advertising, not as a bad idea, it's a good idea, but you got more buyers out there that are gonna buy this kind of tonnage?
Yeah.
There's a lot more people that pay more money, and we're cutting ourselves short if we, if wasn't put in the plane dealer, or newspapers where people could actually see it, and that's.
That's what it's supposed to be.
I appreciate, um, all of the residents, and I specifically, um, am very proud to see Miss, um, Parker come up to the mic. One thing that I say to our residents, if you keep sitting there, waiting and listening, by the time you get through, it's all gonna be over. Um, until, I'm, I'm just gonna. Until, I'm, I'm just gonna answer, because this is where we answer some of the things that, uh, we need to do. It's a response of council and the mayor. And so the mayor is not here, the council can to give its remark. First of all, um, I want everybody to understand that we took the mayor to court. We have, um, the papers that we took him to court. We got a lawyer, the lawyer just got his money not too long ago. Uh, Mr. Fanbro, who was the individual who was filming the, um, council and the mayor, is the one that has the equipment that belongs to the city. Not only that, uh, I sent a letter requesting through the Law Department that Mr. Fanbro bring our equipment back. The mayor, in his infinite wisdom, that's why I don't want the Law Director or the Finance Director to be hired by the, the mayor and his administration. I had it, I went about four or five years ago, where the residents would elect the Finance Director and the, uh, Law Director. You gotta understand that the Law Director and the Finance Director, regardless of what the co, the, the charter says, they belong to the mayor. And once I asked, uh, the Fi, the Finance Director a question, and he said, the mayor is my boss. Once I asked the Law Director, the, about why you, in your capacity, let the mayor tell you to rescind your letter that you sent, his response was, the mayor is my boss. If you take the mayor to court and we send a letter to, uh, McGinty, who is, who was at that time, um, the prosecutor for the county, and, and told him all the things that was happening and what we needed to have done and have documentation for that, this council approved that kind of communication. Am I not correct, Mr. Martin?
Well, the most probably, yes, yes.
Um, also, what else can you do but legislate and keep the business going? You can shut down anything. You can shut down the city if you want to. At one point, when we didn't get the budget, we were going, not going to pass a budget. And we were gonna shut down the city. Well, people wouldn't get paid and there was a lot of emotions going on and this and that and the other. And we heard from the residents. Well, you got people out here who got to be get paid, got da-da-da-da. So you pass. There's legislation, there's business that has to be taken care of regardless. And you heard me, and I don't think, everybody sits up here and they listen, but they really don't listen. I asked, where were your bids just a few minutes ago? Want to see your bids? If you don't get the information that you need up here, there is a little word that says nay. And it has happened. It has happened. Nay has happened. And if you don't get the kinda information you want, or you feel that there is some information that you need and it's on emergency or it is on a two reading, this council has the right to say nay. Or two, uh, more has the right to say nay. That stops it all. The mayor is the mayor. And just a few minutes ago, I would not let Mr. Smalley speak. Not because I don't like Mr. Re, Mr. Smalley, not because I don't respect him, and, and, but that's true. But because I didn't receive anything that gave him the authorization from the mayor to come up here and speak for the mayor. The mayor is the mayor. I didn't have the Law Director here to speak for the mayor. I didn't have anybody up here to speak for the mayor. So in that case, he wasn't gonna speak. And the flip-flop back and forth as a resident and as part of administration, I don't care what nobody say, that's a conflict of interest. Anybody can do that. But my, you're not going to do it under me. He's not gonna do it. I'm the chair. I'm not gonna let him. And the mayor tried and did it one time. But I'm not gonna let him do that anymore. If he don't have enough respect to bring his little short buddy in and sit right there in that chair and be a mayor, then I ain't got no problem telling him no. So ladies and gentlemen, all I'm saying to you, Mr. Stanbury, we do our job. And if we stop doing our job, everything stops. And let me say this too. I don't care what you read in the, the, uh, calling post. Just look at who runs the calling post. Just look at who runs the calling post. Four, okay? And if this lady asks for, for a daughter to be off the commission, who, who you think put him up there? Alright? So I'm not, I, I, I hate that idea. We not pointing fingers. I am pointing fingers. And I do it because I can. And all I'm saying to you all is, this council is working hard. We got meetings that we go to. I got a meeting that I just went to this morning for the homeless shelter. That they aren't giving our shelter here the money that is required to run a shelter in the city of East Cleveland. They getting it to everybody else. So I'm down there to ask and ears for East Cleveland to make sure that we get our money. We got things that we have to do outside of Cleveland that's gonna help East Cleveland. But you can't fight, you can't box with a shadow. If you got people out there working, we need more people. And I'm asking this council and, uh, the, uh, Chair of the Democratic Party, get your people out there in the street, get them in this council so we can show them what we are doing. They're only listening to each other in one organization. And the mayor, who's on there twenty-four-seven, if he ain't got a dance on there, he got his cell phone there. And that little, uh, lady from, uh, Little Lawyer. And I don't know what her credentials are. Ain't nobody ask for her credentials. So, uh, I'm just, that's mine. Uh, moving on to the council reports or remarks, starting with, uh, Councilor King and then, uh.
Thank you, Council President. I'd echo a lot of that, what she said. We still have a responsive bill shutting down the government like the Republicans. It's not, not responsible to our citizens or the employees who have bills and kids and needs. So we must still be responsible, but I do understand your concern. Uh, Ms. Parker?
Yeah.
Beautiful. Bring a friend, bring a neighbor, bring about ten people.
Trust me, I'm a friend.
We love O'Mays, but we like to see new faces too sometimes. There's one last thing I'd like to read. The last council meeting, when I discussed my report and the young man from East Cleveland got an uproar, got home and I got to thinking about it. Sorry, over there. I've already signed it and I'd like everyone on council to sign it. I'll read it to you now. It's very quick. It's going to miss quarterly, but we're CCing the individual, uh, board members of the school board. It was adamantly brought to council's attention at their regular council meeting on March third, that your Shaw High students have the capacity and that the school system has a willingness to partner with the city to work on city-related projects.